Good evening, everybody. Welcome to a special meeting of the Greenfield Planning Board. We're pleased to have M.J. Adams here, the Economic Director for the city, as well as Emily Ennis, who's been working on a strategic plan for downtown Greenfield. And we have one order of business which we're actually going to table for our next meeting, which is a review of the minutes from January 5th and go directly to our community workshop portion. So, the official language in our agenda is, "We're looking at a deliberate downtown community workshop updating downtown revitalization plan. Join the first workshop, learn all that's happening in downtown, a presentation and opportunity for feedback and conversation about the downtown we want to be." So, we're going to get a brief introduction from M.J. Adams, who'll be handing it off to Emily, and then we're going to have an opportunity to walk around and look at the boards and comment and make notes and converse amongst ourselves. So, with that, I'm going to hand it over to M.J. Thanks.
I wasn't expecting to be standing at a podium and reading off a laptop, but, you know, like I said, technology is a wonderful thing when it works and teaches us all to be ready to think on our feet when it doesn't. So, thank you for being here tonight, I really appreciate it, and my special thanks to Planning Board for hosting us this evening. Many of you know that usually master planning is under the purview of the Planning Board, and I just want to give them great credit because in 2014, this might look familiar, they did this thing called the Sustainable Greenfield, which was the master plan process. And I'll share with you that I was actually just starting to work up in Franklin County at that point, and working for the General Housing Authority, and came over and participated in the effort, the community effort, the outreach effort that they were running. And I was so impressed with the level of engagement and the number of people who participated in that process, that I've always felt that this document, this effort, this master planning process, was a great thing that really had the broad support of the community and was really a document you could love and want to help implement. So, thank you, Planning Board, for leading that effort many years ago. And then, I don't know who had the brilliant idea, but frequently master plans just get made and put on a shelf. Greenfield actually created an implementation committee, and their job was to keep the Sustainable Greenfield Master Plan alive and active and moving forward. And when I came to work for Greenfield, I was designated to sit on that committee, and it's been a great opportunity to work with a broad section of people who are interested in seeing sustainable greenfields come to life and stay alive. My focus, when I first came on board in Greenfield, was really community development, working a lot in the downtown, and so my focus has been pretty specifically in the downtown area and what's happening on that. And as we started to move forward and were advancing over the years with sustainable greenfield, it was clear to me that there's been a lot of progress in the things, and we're starting to see the fruits of our labor on that, but that maybe an update and sort of a refresh and a sort of a fresh vision, or at least a new or renewed vision of what we wanted to see happen in downtown Greenfield was called for. So, well, with that, I'm just going to sort of try to stick to my agenda here, rather than telling you the long, long story behind this. But I wanted, like I said, to welcome you here tonight, and again, to appreciate the Planning Board for hosting us. I also want to acknowledge that we pulled together a group. One of the things we recognize is that there's no one group in Greenfield that really represents all the interests that are at play on Main Street in downtown. So, we pulled together an advisory board, and at first we were going to call it the Downtown Revitalization Advisory Board, but then we realized the acronym for that was DRAB.[274.66][274.66](Laughter). We decided to change the name a little, so it's the Downtown Greenfield Alliance. And I want to encourage anybody who's a member of the Downtown Greenfield Alliance, if the technology was working, your name would be up on the screen, but it's only on the screen in front of me. So, folks who are participating in the Downtown Greenfield Alliance would like to stand up and be acknowledged. I'll point you out if you don't. All right. So, there's Caitlin Wunschmidt, and she represents the Cultural District, Crossroads Cultural District as the Chair. And, let's see, anyone else? Chuck, you've been involved. And, let's see. Well, they've seen this presentation before, probably several times, so they're probably relieved that there's no opportunity for them to take a bye on tonight. But anyways, I want to share with you that this meeting is being recorded. Our goal is to provide some information this evening, update everybody on what's happening, what the process is, and then give people the opportunity for input. This is the first opportunity to have input tonight. Our consultant, Emily Ennis, will lead you through the process after I do a walkthrough of what's been happening and why we're doing this. And then, there'll be an ongoing opportunity until early February. I think by February 5th, we'll be looking for input from the community, and we'll be explaining how people who aren't here tonight can see the recording if they'd like to, but also can offer us comment and feedback through a survey process. So, let's see. I also want to say that this is the first workshop. There's a lot of stuff that's happening over the next couple of weeks relative to downtown. This is sort of the big picture, the Downtown Revitalization Update Plan, sort of rollout, launch meeting. And then, following up on these meetings will be two subsequent ones. The next one will be about, very specifically, about parking in the downtown. When we started having these conversations, we knew that there was a lot of concern about how this might affect parking and parking management in downtown. So, we actually, on January 31st, at 5:30, in this very same location, will have a workshop on the parking management study that we're undertaking, and it'll be the first step in that. And then, on February 9th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., also in this location, will be the first workshop that has to do with the Main Street Improvement Program. And that's really the curb-to-curb roadway reconstruction that we started talking about. It's the first meeting we have, the first public meeting we have with the engineers, but that will be the first place to sort of bring it all together specifically around what the roadway design changes might look like. And it's an opportunity for the engineers to present the initial thinking about that and to start to hear from the community your reactions to that. So, with that, you might say, "Why are we more, why are we interested in our downtown?" Well, we know that downtowns are typically the symbolic center of the community. And here, not just for Greenfield, but I think for the region, everyone thinks about downtown Greenfield as sort of being the symbolic center of our communities. And for that reason, they're very important, very important in terms of what they look like and how people use them and how people feel about them. And that's why we've really been taking this focus. We've been looking at our downtown that's really changing from a historical, you know, retail district that we saw it evolving before COVID, and it's really been evolving to something that's much more broad-based. There's civic uses, services, people work there, and what we've been talking more and more is trying to find a way to encourage people to play there and live there.[508.12][508.12](Laughter) And live there. But to do that, we have to make it a comfortable environment for all the different type of users that might come and be at play in the downtown area. And the interesting thing is, we're also seeing that we're strengthening connections to the outer areas. You know, we recently got Valley Flyer to come, and it's the rail connection between New York City and Greenfield, and it runs every day, a couple times every day. And those linkages are really going to have the opportunity to bring more economic activity and more visitors up to our area. And how do we take advantage of that and make sure it works well for us all? You might also know that concurrently, right now, there's also a conversation going on about, "What about rail coming out directly from Boston, extending out past Pittsburgh, through Adams, or through Orange and Athol, out to Greenfield, and then eventually to North Adams?" So, there's a very active planning process that's happening about that. And as we've been talking about that, we know for a long time, when we were talking about trying to get the Valley Flyer to come up from New York, it was a long conversation. But we were patient, and we've been successful in seeing that here. And now, we know that we have the conversation about, "What about the Boston arm?", and this is not going to happen overnight, but we're confident that if we stay on the plan, if we keep it on our list, that we'll get there eventually. And, like I said, our little Greenfield Village Center has a lot to offer, City Center has a lot to offer. We call it Urban, which is the urban center of a rural community. It has, you know, it's a gateway to extraordinary outdoor resources here in the valley, here, especially as we look west from here. We see improving transit options, and we see strong and growing cultural resources. And it's also a relatively more affordable area of the Commonwealth. And so, we see new opportunities with that because of just the nature of work and where people are working and how they're working is really changing pretty profoundly. So, the goal tonight is to really sort of, a little bit of a snapshot about what we've done, where we are now, what we see on the horizon, and then we're going to talk about, we're going to hand it over to Emily, and she's going to lead us through a process about, "What are we worried about? What are we excited about? What do we think is missing? What else do we think might need to be happening?" And I think that the way to do this is really for me to do what I call my Walk Down Main Street. Now, I know that many of you might have seen little pieces of this or all of it before, but the nice thing about it is, there's constant updates, and I'm pretty excited about the constant updates because it feels like there's new energy, there's fresh energy that's happening. And I also know that people are trying to figure out, "Well, what role do I play? How does this, what does this mean to me?" And I think that the important thing is, is that we communicate what's happening so people understand what's going on, how they can participate, how they can influence the things that they're passionate about, and how they can participate in what we hope will be a very vibrant downtown Greenfield in the future. So, with that, I'm going to do my Walk Down Main Street. We were going to do this on the video, but I'm going to have to do it over here. And thank you for all being here tonight. I was a little worried with the snow that we wouldn't have that big of a turnout, but I'm excited to see you here tonight. And I'll share with you that we will get the video up on the website, so you'll be able to see it, you'll also be able to see the slides a little more in detail. So, and then, so I'll do a Walk Down Main Street, and then we'll answer some, you know, quick questions that you might have about anything that you see on the boards or that we're talking about, and then I'll hand it over to Emily to go from there. Okay? Now, I always, oh, I have to take this with me. This is a little clunky, but (laugh) I always start at this end, the west end. The mayor was arguing with me that I should start at the other end, and that's because she lives at the other end. I live in Northampton. When I queued up in my car, this is the way I come into town, so I feel like this is the more natural approach for me. So, and you guys might want to move over here so you can see. I just don't want to be talking, you're talking, see my back. Just going to give you a moment. Christian, can we pull out more chairs? Great. All right. I'll tell you that this idea of showing this visually sort of came to us when we first saw the initial plans that the engineers had put out about talking about what was happening, what the conceptual plans were for the downtown Main Street Improvement Program. The Main Street Improvement Program will be a Massachusetts Department of Transportation TIP-funded project. We're on the list for fiscal year 2027, and it's essentially the roadway reconstruction from 100 feet west, I'm sorry, 100 feet east of Colrain Street, all the way up to the High Street intersection. I want to say right now, there is no rotary in this picture. And the Main Street Improvement Program is really, we've been talking about that, is really the curb-to-curb reconstruction of the roadway. And as we were talking about that, we said, "Well, if we're going to be digging up the roadway, let's take a look at the underlying infrastructure." So, we're actually getting ready to do some engineering evaluation of the water, the sewer, the storm drain, and evaluating whether or not we need conduit in there for the utilities, especially our broadband. That's one of the conversations we've been having, because the idea is, if we're going to rip up this road, we want to get the biggest bang for the buck and minimize the disruption over time. So, that's the Main Street Improvement Program. But what it gave us was a nice sort of roadmap of where we're going. And I want to point out, the D-R-A-F-T, that says "draft", and you'll see it all along because this is not carved in stone, this is a draft. And so, there's opportunity for us to have comment and feedback on it, and so we don't need to talk about how many parking spots there are between this block and that block tonight, but you will see that this is the extent of the project area. So, the first big thing, and everyone knows about this, we dug the big hole. I see the forms are in for the foundation walls for the fire station. It's been a long time coming. It's into construction now, and we are looking for that construction to be completed probably in the spring of 2024. On the other side of the street, on the north side of Main Street, there is the Community Justice Support Center of Franklin County. Don't confuse that with the Justice Center at the other end of the street, but this is actually a building, it's one of our underutilized buildings, but at least half of it is being actively used now by the Sheriff's Department with their Community Services Program. A little further down the road, we have the Wells Street Shelter. And what's happened there is, it's been the shelter for a number of years. You might have heard recently that there's going to be a transition in terms of who's running the shelter, and the wonderful thing that's happening concurrently with that transition to a new service provider, which will be Clinical Support Options, CSO, is CSO is actually going to acquire the building, renovate the shelter, and create some additional units that will be tied to folks who are trying to move out of the shelter into housing with some supported services. The timeframe for that is, as we're hoping, that construction will start later in 2023. It's nice to say, later this year, and hopefully completion, at least sufficient completion in 2024, so we can start using it before the winter hits. Down on the south side of Main Street, you saw that we were able to convert the Miles Street Parking Lot into a pocket park. That's actually a project that has sort of been on the books since 2012. We'd been able to nip away at little pieces of it over the years, but we were able with some Mass Department of Transportation funding to actually make the big flip, convert it into a green space, and that's been very well received by the community. The big news for me, and I think for a lot of the community, has been the redevelopment of the Wilsons Building. We knew that Wilsons, you know, when I came to work here in 2015, there were, you know, concerns about recognition that Wilsons was going to close at some point and what was going to happen to this major property in the middle of our downtown. And it did close right before the pandemic. We knew that before it closed, that the co-op had started expressing interest in perhaps relocating into that location. Things sort of went quiet for a while during the early part of the pandemic, but we started working with partners, and we were able to see that the co-op, mass development, and the community builders were able to put together a deal to acquire Wilsons, and they were able to announce that in November of 2022. I'll share with you that we actually started the conversation about launching the Downtown Revitalization Plan. And I said, "Well, you know, it makes more sense to do it when we know, when we can say something out loud about Wilsons." So, we had known it was coming, we were delighted in November that we were able to have it announced. At the moment, my understanding is the co-op is planning to close and start their construction probably around October of this year, October of 2023, and then the housing will come along after that. Representatives from the community builders are here this evening, by the way, and I'm very grateful for their leadership and willingness to step into a project that's going to have a big change in our day. Got some great partners, were able to look at the co-op, watch it expand, watch it grow, watch it expand its product mix, keep a grocery store in downtown Greenfield, critical to our downtown future, and also to Seymour Housing, which has also been one of our goals for the downtown. The, along, the Skateboard Park, yes, finally, the Skateboard Park is under construction, it's on the far north side of the Chapman Davis Parking Lot. It's under construction. Construction's supposed to be completed sometime in June of this year. We're excited about that. I will share with you that the Skateboard Park and some other things happening did trigger some conversations, animated conversations about parking, availability, demand and supply in downtown. And for that reason, we were actually, we actually sought some grant money from the state, have some parking consultants on working with us, and have just started up a parking management study to take a look at, "What does our parking supply look like in downtown? What do we need? How are the things that we know are going to happen? How do they play into that demand and supply? And how do we better manage it so it serves the variety of needs for parking in the downtown?" The next thing is the Court Square redevelopment. Again, another project that was flushed out a couple of years ago in a community process where we did some design work, had a community design charrette to decide what we might think about doing with that, changing that roadway between City Hall and Town Common into a public open space, and have some basic designs that were crafted back in 2017, but looking to bring those up to speed, given that we had the opportunity over the last couple of years to do a pilot project and sort of barrier off the Court Square in the nicer weather and see how we might be able to use it, recognizing that you just can't barrier off a space and assume that it will work well, that there's a really important piece about programming and making it active and making it comfortable and attractive for people to use, and that that doesn't just happen with physical construction, that there has to be some sort of organization that's paying attention to what's happening there in Court Square, but also along downtown, to make our downtown community a really attractive and appealing place to spend time. The downtown, GCC Downtown Center Building was on the market a couple months ago. It went under contract, and we know that the new owner has closed on it. You might have seen a newspaper, an article in the newspaper about that, I think just last week. It was bought by a small business owner who's looking to relocate his internet business. He does a little internet e-commerce business, but has a lot of space that he will not be needing. So, we've been talking with him already about other opportunities in terms of what things he might be able to do in the downtown, but really pleased that it's in the hands of some new owner, has young and energy, and feels pretty excited about coming up to Greenfield. Oh, I'm sorry, but back up to Court Square, I forgot to tell you about our new little business, our little kiosk that's going to be going, installed into, on the corner of Court Square. One of the things we recognized as we were doing some of our planning work over the last couple of years is that we don't have a downtown business directory. If you arrive in downtown, there's nothing that does any wayfinding with you, to you about, "Where can I eat? Where can I shop? What's going on here?" And so, the construction that you see on Town Common right now is actually the electrical installation we're able to upgrade and provide a 200-amp service to the Town Common, which the Recreation Department is very excited about because they're one of our biggest users of that public space, but it will also provide service to the kiosk. Let's see, the First National Bank Building, vacant since 1976. I used to joke that I would retire, I wouldn't retire until it was solved. I'm not making that joke anymore.[1363.01][1363.01](Laughter). But I will share with you that it was, it's been, you know, a focus of our conversation. There had been some thought that it could become a performance venue or creative flex workspace, or flex space for the cultural activities. You might know we did a feasibility study on that a couple of years ago. And as we were doing that, this is what I call part of the good news story, is that when that idea came to be, you know, there wasn't a lot happening in downtown Greenfield around arts and music and performance, but then Hawks and Reed sort of took root, and Hawks and Reed started to grow, and as we were watching them flourish, we kept on saying to ourselves, "Well, it's great that we want to do this across the street, but we also don't want to undermine a new venue that's coming on and thriving and doing well." And the thing that I'm excited about is, you know, it used to be that Northampton was sort of the center of the universe in the valley around music, but that's really dispersing now, and we're seeing a lot more music and performance activity happening in Amherst and East Hampton and Greenfield, and we're all benefiting by the dispersment of that activity coming up here, and Hawks and Reed seems to be doing very well, and we're really excited because it's a real anchor in our downtown, and everybody up and down the valley talks about it now. I overheard that at first night in Northampton when I was volunteering. But, did I get distracted by the First National Bank? I did, thank you. So, anyways, the game plan is now, it's owned by the Greenfield Redevelopment Authority. We have a request for proposal that's out there to the private sector, saying, "Tell us what you might be interested in using this building for." So, hopefully this spring we'll get some responses on that. You know, we're always, we're the perpetual optimists up here, so I'm hopeful that we'll see something, but if we don't see something, I think that we have to start, you know, thinking about, "What's the next step for that?", you know? But I'm going to remain hopeful until we get those proposals and make some decisions about that. I will say that regardless of what happens, the city is extremely committed, and we're obligated, to really keep that building facade. So, whatever happens in that space, that facade is going to stay in place. It's beautiful, it's historic, it's a piece of our downtown, you know, profile, it's very meaningful to the community, and that will remain in place. What happens behind the facade remains to be seen. The Levitt-Hovey House, which is the current library, will no longer be used as the library when they move into the new facility in the late spring, early summer. I don't know that I know the exact date on that, but it's soon and this year. So, the question is, what do we do with that lovely old historic building after it's no longer needed by the library? You might know that the city put out a request for proposal, nothing came in on that. So, I know that the mayor's thinking about that, about what the future use might be, but it's not decided yet, and I think that it's, at the moment, we'll wait till the library gets itself moved out and then try to figure out what goes next for that. But it is a redevelopment opportunity. If the city decides that we're not going to use it for our own uses, then who else out there might be interested in it? And clearly, it's, you know, it's one of those beautiful historic cultural features in our downtown that we really want to make sure is well-used and preserved. The new library, I feel like I don't have to tell anybody about the new library because it feels like this community talks a lot about libraries and has been doing that for several years. The good news is that, number one, it's actually going to be done this year, and I know that there's some parking issues that have come up around, what's parking going to look like down at that end of the, of the Main Street corridor when it, when it all sells out, and that's why, that's part of our parking management studies, we're really looking at the parking issue up and down the street. The other conversation that we've been having is, what happens to the Hope Street Parking Lot when the temporary fire station isn't there anymore? Once the fire station relocates to their new facility at the west end of Main Street, that spot will be open. And I know I've heard conversations over the last year, "But let's use it for housing, let's use it for this, let's use it for that." Part of the reason we're having this parking management study is actually to see whether or not we will need that for parking, and if, so that we have, make an intelligent decision about its future use based on some current understanding about what our parking needs are in the downtown area, and if it isn't needed, then a community conversation about, "What can we do with this great space that's so close to downtown that might be repurposed for another reason?" That said, you know, the Armory Building, down on the corner of Armory, well, Armory Street and Hope Street, was sold to a private person last November. We don't exactly, we don't know what his plans are yet, we know he's local, and, you know, we know that it's a, it's a building that we looked at to see whether or not housing could be done in it. It was pretty challenging to do housing on that site. It's a very, the armory essentially consumes the whole piece of land that it sits on, so there's not, like, you could build something onto it to make housing, and it's actually the characteristics of the window slits that make it so problematic. Everyone says, "Why can't you put housing there?" And I say, "'Cause the windows are so small." That said, there's some other things that are happening, there's some changes happening in ownership on some of the big parcels on Hope Street, which, you know, it sounds exciting because what I feel is some new fresh energy, some new blood, some new energy coming into our downtown, and I think it's, you know, critically important as we're standing here tonight, thinking about what sort of feedback, what do we want our downtown to look like in five to 10 years? How do we want it to behave? Who do we want to attract here? It's really our opportunity tonight and over the next couple of weeks to really, you know, put our thumbprints on it and say, you know, "This is what we want it to be, this is what we like about what we see, this is what we're concerned about what we see, this is what we think is missing." And with all of that, I think I'm going to hand it over to Emily. Thank you.[1736.65][1736.65](Applause).
Thank you all. I think when I first started working with M.J., she had to repeat what was going on several times because I kept stopping, saying, "Wait, there's more?" So, my name is Emily Ennis, I'm with Ennis Associates, I'm an urban planner and designer. I do a lot of work in Massachusetts communities of all shapes and sizes, so it's a real pleasure to be working with M.J., to be working with the Downtown Greenfield Alliance. And really, my job in this process is to make it easy for all of you here tonight to be able to give us your input, and then, over the next few weeks, I'll talk about what that means in a minute, over the next few weeks, make it easy for other people who aren't here tonight, who maybe see this on TV or see the signs that are going to be up downtown, little preview, to get them to comment as well. So, as M.J. said, she's given you a lot about the what So as MJ said, she's given you a lot about the what um what's happening now, what is the current status of the downtown, what's going to be, you know, what's already in process. What we're going to be talking about today is what the future could be. So before we get there, let me just say that I've met with the Downtown Greenfield Alliance twice. Both of those meetings were really about prepping for tonight, about coming up with the questions that we wanted to ask you and setting up the format in which we could ask those questions. After this meeting is over, these boards are going to be up in Wilson's, the maps and the question boards. So please send anybody who wasn't here tonight to Wilson's. They may also be elsewhere in the downtown, but we definitely know they're going to be in Wilson's. Um these will be up through January thirty first and you'll see when you look at the boards that there are two ways of interacting with with the information. One is there is both a website link and a QR code, which you can scan with your phone if you have a smartphone, to um MJ's department where you can find out all of the background information on what's been happening in the downtown. The other link and QR code is to a survey. So you here tonight are going to be using stickies. People in Wilson's aren't going, aren't going to be able to put stickies on the front window of Wilson's because they'll blow off. So the survey is a way of getting people to get, give input, um same questions, same information. It also means that if you leave here tonight and you say, oh, you know, I meant to mention the thing that I just thought about while taking my shower and it's really important, you too can go to the survey and take that and tell us what you forgot to tell us tonight. So that's going to close uh January um thirty first, the boards will come down, the survey itself closes on February sixth. Then the boards are going to come back up again at the Winter Festival and so keep an eye out for them there. This is also a plug, uh the Winter Carnival, sorry. This is also a plug for the Winter Carnival. Um that's why we're here tonight, actually, is to plug for the Winter Carnival. The boards will be up then, survey closes February sixth. We meet, the Downtown Greenfield Alliance meets again on February seventh and we're gonna put everything we heard tonight together, everything we heard from the survey and the Winter Carnival together and um come up with the next steps. And so the idea is that we're going to distill this down into what the community sees as a vision for downtown Greenfield. And then um we're gonna have two meetings on that, one in February seventh, one towards the end of February, beginning of March. And then sometime in March, we'll present that distilled vision for the future to City Council. So that's where all of this is going. And then the different departments that are involved, certainly MJ and her team, the Planning Board, City Council, can use that input as they think about the next steps for the community. So what we've done today is we've broken it down into four big categories, downtown identity, downtown challenges, downtown experience, and downtown businesses. And on each of the boards, you're going to see a series of questions. We do not expect you to stand there with a three-by-three card and answer every single question in essay format. Um they're really meant to spur some ideas on your part. If you want to answer them in essay format on a three-by-three card, that is just fine. Um but remember, I'm typing these up, so make sure your handwriting is legible. Um but it's really a prompt. So when you think of the downtown identity, think of what it means to you, what does downtown Greenfield mean to you? What does it mean to other people in Greenfield? What would you like it to mean to other people and to yourself? And also, what does it mean to the region? We talked in our our committee meeting about uh how Greenfield can be very much a hub for the region and what does that mean in terms of bringing people in and sending them out again and having Greenfield be that common point of contact? So think about that in terms of identity. For experience, we really want you to think about what what's it like being downtown? What would you like it to be, being downtown? Why do you come to downtown Greenfield? When do you come to downtown Greenfield? What do you do when you're here? What would you like to do? That's the part about being missing that MJ mentioned. When you think about the challenges, uh we'd like to think about, you know, what what's um what needs to happen to bring more people to downtown Greenfield, whether that's, you know, for shopping, for playing, but also for living? Would you live in downtown Greenfield if it had the appro, do you already live in downtown Greenfield? Um uh so think about that, but also think what could Greenfield learn from other downtowns that you might go to? Why do you go to those other downtowns? And maybe, given everything that's happening here, what could other communities learn from Greenfield? I said to MJ when when we started talking about this, usually I'm talking with communities long before they get to this stage. So you as a community should be very proud of all of that you're, all that you're doing here. It's it's incredible to see this much happening at once. And then finally, businesses bring a downtown to life. And so we've got a board that asked you, have you tried to start a business in Greenfield? And did you consider the downtown? What do you think businesses need for help in opening and remaining in downtown Greenfield? What businesses may be missing and what businesses do you like to go to? So you'll find between each of the boards, there is a table that's got a bunch of stickies on it and a bunch of pins. If we run out, I have more, so don't be afraid to come up and say, hey, this table's run out of pins, we need some more. I always bring some extra. So we're gonna put all, put all of those together. Um MJ also mentioned during this period, you're going to have the parking meeting um and you're going to have the meeting on the curb-to-curb. So really, for tonight, don't focus on the parking, don't focus on the curb-to-curb design, focus on the next stages after that because there will be that opportunity to talk about those other two topics there. MJ, have I forgotten anything? All right. Do you wanna take questions now, either about what you've said or about the process? Okay.
So we haven't seen anyone had any questions on anything that we might have presented up here. Yes, Phil?
Yes. No, I announced that at the beginning, that there would be no rotary. There is no rotary. Is that what you mean by the rotary at High Street? Uh that's a conversation for the February ninth meeting. So um as Emily said and as I said at the beginning of the meeting, um we are having two subsequent meetings that are gonna be impactful about what's happening in downtown. That is the January thirty first meeting to talk about parking. So if you have a burning, if you have a burning question about parking or like parking and just can't stand not talking about it, please come to the meeting on January thirty first at five thirty in this very same location where um the parking folks, Stantec, will be here and will be talking about their preliminary um information about their initial assessment about our parking situation and so walk through the process about what we look to do to get, we're gonna be doing some pretty significant uh data gathering uh over the spring about how our parking is being used and how we're managing it and making sure that we're tuned in to how the parking supply, both the demand uh and the supply, um will it will be impacted by these moving parts that are happening on on Main Street, especially since we know that there's new things that are gonna be coming into downtown and making sure that we're accommodating for that future. So. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
So um I saw that you talked a little bit about the Court Square redevelopment, the, sorry, the Court Square redevelopment, the um it it was almost like its own little park, a temporary park where you had the road closed off. Is the is the eventual goal to have that be permanent or is that kind of still up in the air?
The goal is to have some sort of transition to what the the plan was with it being, I call it less vehicle intensive. And I don't know exactly what that means, but we, you know, the first year we we closed it off, we, it was pretty, um it was challenging for the community. I think, you know, we were in the middle of COVID, we're trying to respond to things like that. Um and when we we closed it off, you know, we learned a lot that year, let me say that. We got a lot of feedback. We made some adjustments as we did the pilot program in the second and third year. Um it's become much more acceptable. I mean, we didn't have the same level of concern this past year. We're seeing it used much more actively. We're getting a lot of feedback from people who enjoy using it. Um so the final design isn't carved in stone, uh but there does seem to be a, we're moving towards having less vehicle intensity on that. But we're not all the way there yet. And and what I should say is that that we'll be starting the design work on that hopefully later this year. So the plan is we will be closing it off. April twenty ninth is the day we're gonna be putting the planters back in. You know, the farmer's market uses it very actively. We're planning to have very active programming for it over the summer and then be doing the design work over the course of the year. Yep. Yep. No, but this is being recorded.
Oh, okay. Thank you, MJ. MJ and Emily, could you please tell us, over the next ten years or so, how much is the total cost of all these capital projects and how much of it is proposed to be grant money and specifically on the shoulders of the taxpayers? And the second part to that question, do you have a contingency plan if it doesn't work? If in twenty years, this does not improve our quality of life despite that great investment from the taxpayers?
Thank you for the question. Um I don't have a dollar figure. That's a good question and I think it's something that we should probably start putting something together that so that we have an answer on that. And yes, we know that at the moment, there is some unusual resources that are available to have things like this happen. You know, there's been a real focus in, especially in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with the importance of our downtown and looking for some infrastructure upgrades to make sure that they're good, solid little downtowns and they have the infrastructure to support people living there. Um so we are looking to put ourselves in a good position so that this, so that we can tap those resources that are available uh from the federal government and from the state government. Will there have to be some local buy-in and commitment? Absolutely. We, you know, we, we, it's 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 our home, we have some responsibilities to have some skin in the game, um but the actual dollar value of it, I can't say, but it's something that we should probably start penciling out. Did I answer your question well enough? And what happens if it fails? I I think your question also was, you know, what if it doesn't work out? You know, downtowns are constantly in in evolution. I mean, downtown Greenfield doesn't look like it did twenty years ago and it won't look like this twenty years from now. And I think that the 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 challenge is to manage that change as best you can in a way that works well for the community. So it's not a static process. Yes.
Hi, MJ. I'm in a butter. I live on Chapman. Um I I am concerned about the traffic that comes on Chapman already, before the redesign of the whole downtown. I really think it's important that we have a traffic study. Um people go about sixty-five miles an hour down the street as it is right now because they use it as a cutoff. So if we're redesigning, we really, I think it's important that we notify all of the abutters. Have plenty of public hearings, so we had a lot of input on the people who, from the people who actually live in a butt downtown.
Stephanie, that that doesn't sound like a question, that sounds like a great statement and comment.
Sorry. So how are we gonna solve it?
Well, you're gonna put it on a post-it note. And that's that, that's, you know, that's the the opportunity we have here tonight is to really flag those things that are of concern. And Stephanie, you've been very vocal about, you're, you're, you make that uh concern known in several venues and I appreciate that. Uh so the, but it's always the challenge of who needs to know this concern and how do we get it on the table as we're making decisions that could impact whether or not that gets better or worse? So absolutely encourage that as a post-it note. Okay. Any other questions?
Thanks. Thanks for your presentation. It was exciting to see um everything laid out as it was. I have two questions. One, I'm unclear of what Emily Emily's role is here. Uh is your consultancy just to have this public meeting or what is your role? And then secondly, what happens to all of these comments?
Sure. I hired her because with our community development block grant funds, as we saw things that were happening with the downtown and wanted to do a downtown revitalization plan update, we felt it was better to bring a fresh set of eyes and an outside facilitator to help make sure that this process in terms of getting community input was open and welcoming and and not tainted by me trying to run the process myself. Uh and then the second piece, Holly?
Excellent question. So yes, as as MJ said, my role in this project is simply the facilitation of the public meetings and the comments. So what happens is today, once you've all put lots of comments on the boards, um once everybody is done, I will take pictures of the boards with the comments on them, then I'm taking the comments off the boards. I will record which board they were on, taking them back to my office and I'll type them up for discussion, presentation and discussion first with the Downtown Greenfield Alliance. Um I will also do the same with the surveys, so that actually is using a platform called Survey Monkey. Um and it will collate all of the answers to the questions for me. Um once they come through, I'll bring those first to Downtown Greenfield Alliance. So there will be a document that has everything typed up and just the raw data, right? So that anybody can have that and look at it. And then what we'll do is we'll talk about how best to um uh bring the comments forward in a form that is more easily read. So we do it a number of different ways. For the Survey Monkey, there are some um quantitative answers in there. In other words, we can rank what people answered and use that. For a lot of the others, we're going to be looking for keywords, you know, first of all, which question were people answering? Um we'll be looking for the keywords, we'll be looking for, you know, was this a concern? Was this a a desire? We want something to happen here, we're concerned about something here and group them all together. So the upshot is going to be something, probably a PowerPoint presentation that does a high-level summary of all the comments and then all of the comments will also be available in a document for review later on. So I capture everything and I pass that on to MJ and her team afterwards.
Yes, George.
Thank you. Um wanted to check the second date you mentioned, the ninth, what the time and location of that was. And also, um it's great that we're able to meet in person after almost three years of having to be wary of that. Um but uh one positive side effect of the pandemic was the establishment of connections virtually. And uh so there's been a lot more, excuse me, engagement in the public process through that technology. And so, you know, whether it's because of weather or other obligations or health concerns, I would really like to see if as part of this process, there was some uh just virtual or hybrid uh meeting happening so that other people could be involved.
Thank you, George. And I I agree with you. Um you know, that people are, you know, do we meet in person? Do we do a hybrid? We actually talked about what might work here. We're actually recording this right now and it'll be available and people will have opportunity to participate in feedback uh over, you know, via the survey. Um later on, as as, you know, as we get, move on to the other meetings, we're trying to figure out how to balance the hybrid versus in-person challenges. But I agree with you that we learned a lot during the pandemic and how do we keep the best of both worlds? You know, the human engagement and also the opportunity for people who might not, who it might be challenging to be here in person to actually show up or to participate in a meaningful way, even though they're not physically here. And you asked a question of-
Details on the ninth.
The details on the ninth is it will be here, six to eight in the evening. And you'll, there'll be press releases on that. We were gonna put, we're gonna put those out, but we didn't want people to get confused with the variety of meetings that are happening over the next couple of weeks. So you'll see a lot in the paper over the next couple of weeks on that. The parking is January thirty first, five thirty to seven, right here. And then the um the Main Street Improvement Program, February ninth, which is a Thursday, six to eight here.
Um my question has to do with the collection of comments, since I may not be able to stay long enough to do it tonight. And I would try to get downtown, I presume it's on the out, on the sidewalk, you can walk and see it. Is there a way to access it online and get comments that way as well?
Yes, um there, it'll actually, my webpage on um the city website, the Community and Economic Development page, but I also, I just wanna say publicly that I believe we're going to be launching a new city website. And when that happens, there might be a little glitchy glitchy, hopefully not. Oh, Caitlin says absolutely not. Uh but if there are, um know that we're we're bird dogging that because it's a, it's a bit of a change for the city and we wanna make sure-
Community development on your side.
Community and uh community and economic development, yes. Did I see one back here? Yeah.
Uh John Garrett, I live on Hope Street. And so I have two questions. Um I've noticed on this kind of uh board kind of setup over here, there's some stuff that's off of Main Street. So, you know, I mentioned I live on Hope Street, love to see the two projects there as part of the conversation about downtown. And I was wondering if there's any consideration of any of the properties north of Main Street? Like in particular, I think of the hole in the ground on Chapman Street with the rebar sticking out of it. I actually hate that hole so much, I actually looked up who owns it and I saw at one point the city sold it for like five dollars or something like ten years ago. And it genuinely, like I I joke to folks who don't live in town, like, yeah, you know in Parks and Rec how they have the pit? We have our own pit, there's like a baby shoe in it and a bunch of nips and it's very sad and awful and they put a community garden next to it and, you know. So but like, we, we fix Main Street and we have a hole in the ground ten feet north of it, it's it's tough. And then those parking lots are also kind of a hole. So is there any, any consideration? I recognize the parking study needs to happen. I recognize the parking study needs to happen. Glad that's going to happen, of like the Hope Street lot, potentially redeveloping those? And my other question is as far as the Main Street curb-to-curb design, what I'm looking at looks a lot like a complete streets kind of plan, which is fabulous. Is that how it's going to be? If there's pushback from the community, which there inevitably will be, you take away parking spaces, people will be furious. Is that how it's going to be? Oh, of course. It's going to happen. Is that going to be part of how it is argued for, that this is about sharing space? Like, is there a thesis basically to the design? Does that make sense? Thanks.
I will share that Greenfield is a complete street community. And I'm going to save all those questions about what does it mean, the curb-to-curb and the complete street philosophy for the February 9th meeting. And your question about the, the northern, specifically the property that you were talking about is part of the Wilson's property that was acquired and will be part of the redevelopment plan for the co-op and the housing. So yes, we're very excited about that. Yes, yes.
Bob Wiliford. I had the opportunity to tour the city hall with the Planning and Construction Committee a couple of weeks ago, and it is really tightly packed in there. Is there any consideration being given to moving parts of the city bureaucracy to some other building? And does that at all fit into this process?
You're absolutely right that City Hall is packed. And yes, there are some conversations about how to best use the municipal resources, especially, you know, clearly, we're having some conversations about the, the old library and what's going to happen with that. It's not decided. I'm not, I'm just saying that there's conversations happening, so. Any other questions? Great, that means we have time to do our post-it notes. And do you want me to hand it over to you for any more instruction?
So I'll just remind everybody, if we run out of pins or stickies, let me know. This part is open house. So you know, if, once you're, we're not going to come back and do a wrap-up or anything. So spend as much time or as little time as you like, but do remember that you still have that opportunity to go back to the online survey. The information is on the boards itself or to Wilson's. The information will be there or to the, your department website, Community and Economic Development website, and there'll be a link there. And thank you again so much. We are very much looking forward to seeing your comments. So thank you for being here tonight, and please write lots for us.
I'm just going to say one more thing that I actually, staff from my office, Christian, will be standing around one of the boards to help people and to provide guidance and to encourage you to talk. As well, I want to introduce folks to a new staff person in my office. Her name's Anna Altman. She has just joined the staff on Tuesday and it's sort of baptism of high fire this week. And then Caitlin Von Schmidt, who also is the, sits on the Greenfield, Downtown Greenfield Alliance, but also works in the mayor's office and is the chair of the Crossroads Cultural District, is also going to be helping with the boards. So we encourage you to mill around, talk with your, your colleagues in here, fill out your post-it notes. Emily and I are wandering around. Chuck, are you staying for a bit?
Yeah, I'm going to close our meeting and then we'll, we'll sort of mill around.
All right. So I'm going to hand it over to Chuck. And again, thank you so much for coming out tonight. I know there were a lot of things that were going on in town. I'm glad you decided to be here and really look forward to hearing your feedback and comments on everything. So thank you.
Thanks, MJ. Thanks all. Have fun. And I'm going to close out the planning board meeting unceremoniously, and you can have fun with the boards and enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you very much for coming out.